Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside's Board of Trustees' regular meeting for Thursday, April 1, 2021. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Sells.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Jisa. Not yet. Trustee Pollock.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina. Also present Village Clerk Haley. And Trustee Gallegos has just joined us.
Here.
Thank you. Because we're... Oh, Mr. Molina, do you want to do our COVID litany for us?
Yes. So we still have a gubernatorial emergency order. It relates to public health and the village president has determined that it is neither practicable nor safe for the board and the public to meet completely in public under the normal procedures of the Open Meetings Act. So therefore, it is appropriate for us to proceed in a virtual forum as long as we meet all the requirements and we've met the threshold one right here so we can proceed, in my opinion.
Thank you, Attorney Molina. Appreciate that. Because of the Zoom nature of the meeting, we will bypass the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Next up is public comment. I don't know whether I asked Director Johns or Clerk Haley about the public comment.
We did receive an email regarding the rental dwelling unit ordinance, and we also have three emails that we received regarding the flood wall. Would you like me to read them now, or do you want to wait until those items come up for discussion?
Why don't we wait till they come up? That way, the comments will be fresh in the mind of the trustees when they're discussing the individual items. Is there anyone in the waiting room that wanted to address the board directly, Director Johns?
I've gotten no comments through the chat feature.
Okay. Okay, hearing that, then we'll move on to the reports of village officers. First up is the village president's report, of which I do not have one this evening. So I will turn it over to Manager Francis.
Thank you, President Sells. I have a couple of items I wanted to note for residents and for the village board. Vehicle sticker and pet license renewals will be mailed to residents in May and must be renewed by June 30th to avoid late fees. Residents are strongly encouraged to renew online, by phone, or by mail rather than coming into the village offices to renew in person. You may also leave your paperwork and a check in the silver lockbox that is located in front of our building or mail in the paperwork in payment. Village staff will mail your stickers and tags to you, even if you come into the office to pay. This change in procedures to prevent a situation where people are standing in line in close proximity to one another, since there are many people who have not yet received the COVID-19 vaccine. And so that's just to let the residents know well in advance that we'll be staying with similar protocol and procedure that we implemented last year. Also, on March 11th, 2021, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 into law. The Illinois Municipal League has estimated that the Village of Riverside may be eligible to receive up to $1,057,940. Village staff is awaiting final allocation totals from the U.S. Department of Treasury and guidance on expenses before presenting options to the board. Eligible expenses include cost to respond to COVID-19 or its negative economic impact, cost of labor performing essential work due to COVID-19, offsetting reduced revenue due to COVID-19, and costs to make necessary investment in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And we'll be reporting more as we get more information to the village board at a future date. And finally, the village offices will be closed tomorrow and will resume regular business on Monday. That is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Manager Francis. We'll move on now to the approval of the consent agenda. Oops, I had it for a second. On the agenda this evening is to approve the voucher list of bills for April 1, 2021, approved Village Board of Trustees' special joint meeting with preservation and the Landscape Advisory Commission and the Parks and Recreation Board, and the regular meeting minutes of the village board for March 18, 2021. A motion to approve a First Amendment to an agreement between the Village of Riverside and Riverside Little League relative to the use and maintenance of the Village of Riverside Parks and Recreation baseball fields. A resolution of the Village of Riverside to authorize the addition of lockbox services to the banking services agreement with Riverside Bank. And a resolution authorizing the provision of commission cards for auxiliary police corps members and the Brookfield Zoo police officers. Does anyone need any of these items removed for discussion? Seeing none, I would ask for an emotion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
Ms. Collins, please call the roll.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Has Trustee Jisa joined us? I do not see him yet.
He won't be joining us this evening.
Okay.
I believe he's still in Florida in an RV. So we'll move on now to ordinances and resolutions. First up is an ordinance providing for the registration and inspection of rental properties within the Village of Riverside. Manager Francis.
Thank you, President Sells. I'll be providing an overall summary, and then Attorney Molina will provide any items that perhaps I overlooked during my summary. Currently, the village does not have the registration and inspection of rental properties. This ordinance would create such a process. The purpose of this rental and registration process is to provide for registration and inspection of residential rental properties within the village so as to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the village to facilitate more effective communication between the village and rental property owners, facilitate the enforcement of minimum standards for maintenance of rental properties free from substandard, unsafe, and/or non-code compliant conditions through a regulatory scheme rather than a complaint-driven enforcement, and to aid in the preservation of the character of the village and its property values. The ordinance, as it's currently drafted, states that every rental unit within the village must be registered. The registration form would include the following information: the address of the rental dwelling unit to be occupied, the number of separate rental dwelling units within the dwelling, the full legal name, address, telephone number, and email address of each and every owner, name and contact information for any agent or representative of the owner, service address for service of notices of violation or citations related to any dwelling containing rental units, 24-hour emergency contact phone number, total square footage designed for living and sleeping purposes within the rental unit to be occupied. Registration will need to be completed annually. The registration period will be from January 1 through December 31st. Pre-re-registration shall occur within 30 days of any changes in the information on the form, and there will not be an additional fee to re-register. Each rental unit that is in compliance shall receive a residential rental certificate of compliance. The fees for these inspections are as follows: a house or each apartment is $50 each; re-inspection is $25; and second and subsequent re-inspections are $50 each. Once the ordinance is approved, rental owners will have three months to complete the initial rental property registration. Village staff will then begin to create three rental inspection zones within the village, and then beginning in 2022, Zone 1 will be inspected. And by 2024, all inspections for rental properties will be completed, and in 2025, we will resume inspections in Zone 1 to be inspected for a second time. This item is up for just initial board discussion, and it is anticipated that whatever modifications the board recommends, we would then present it at the April 15th board meeting for final action.
Well, that was very thorough, Jessica. I don't have anything to add. You basically summarized the whole thing. The only thing that I will say is that Jessica and President Sells have been hoping to do this for a while. We do have some limitations because, as you all know very well, village is not home rule, but by focusing on the police power and having registration of these rental units, although it has some limitations on us, we feel that we can have the authority to do what this ordinance does as long as it stays focused on the public health, welfare, and safety aspects. That's all I would add at this time.
Thank you both. So, Clerk Haley, I believe you have a letter with regard to this one. Would you like to read that one at this point?
Certainly. This is an email that was received from Jacqueline Miller, and she says, "Dear Board of Trustees, I support the new regulations regarding inspection of rental properties in Riverside. I see that the new ordinance includes definitions of dwelling and dwelling unit. As a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I recently noticed that the zoning code doesn't contain a detailed definition of the term dwelling unit or any definition of the term dwelling. Although the use is defined provision at 10113 of the zoning code has definitions of dwelling unit, single-family, and other types of dwelling units, the definitions are vague and don't really explain what makes a building a dwelling. The definitions in the new ordinance are more detailed. See Proposed 4119B, and I recommend that you ask the village attorney whether it's advisable to add similar definitions to the zoning code. Regarding the fee structure for inspections contained in Proposed 4119F1 and 2, have these fees been set at dollar amounts that will ensure that inspection costs are fully captured? Does the board expect to actually raise any revenue through charging such fees? It is advisable to include an inflationary adjust... Or is it advisable to include an inflationary adjustment for such fees in the ordinance? Thank you, Jacqueline Miller."
Okay, so I think, not surprisingly, Ms. Miller raises two really good points. Is there any objection to the attorneys and the Planning and Zoning Commission taking a look at adding the dwelling definition into the zoning code? It does seem like it's an omission that should be addressed. Does everybody agree with that? Yes, okay. And since Ms. Miller raised it... Well, actually, let's take an overall look at the ordinance first because we'll eventually get to the fees component. So it's a... As you can see, I think our attorneys have done a really, really good job in making this very clear and very straightforward. So let me... I'm just gonna... Normally, we would go through it, you know, a clause at a time, but since it's kind of of a piece, let me just throw it open to the trustees and ask for your questions, concerns, suggestions as to what you have in front of you. We'd like to begin.
I'll start.
Please.
Trustee Pollock here. I just want to be sure that... And I understand, I completely understand that as a non-home rule community, this cannot be a revenue producer. Our fees have to roughly match the cost of running the program. But I want to make sure that they at least match the cost of running the program, all costs, hard costs, soft costs, et cetera. And so I would just ask before we consider a final ordinance that the staff look into that and report back to us on their expectation of the costs of the program and the revenues generated. I did have some correspondence with Manager Francis today and yesterday about that, and she did provide some information, but I think there's... Yeah, I'd like to see a comprehensive spreadsheet or report that shows the costs and revenues to make sure that our fees are appropriate.
So with regard to that, Manager Francis, would you like to share with the public the, you know, the rough figures you got today and how they line up against the cost of the program? But obviously, we're going to do what Trustee Pollock suggests and have a firmer answer to this, but at least we can get an idea.
Certainly. So we did pull some rough estimates with regard to the total units. The unknown right now, as it stands, is really the single-family homes. But we anticipate it to be approximately 700, a little bit over 700 units. What we ran today was 714 units that we would need to inspect, and we're hoping that we were able to pull from that initial analysis were the condos that are owned and the resident lives in those and doesn't rent those out. So approximately based on those 714 units, the revenue would be approximately $35,700. But you also have to divvy that up into thirds because the expectation would be that we would approximately be inspecting these units once every three years unless there is turnover in the rental, and then we would be able to go and inspect it at that point in time. So that one would be kind of an unknown until we actually have, I would say, a full three years of the program. However, I did reach out to our contractual inspector, and he did indicate that the cost would be $40 per condo or apartment inspection. And so currently, as the ordinance is drafted, it's $50 for the initial inspection. However, the re-inspection is only $25, so we would need to evaluate that item. He did tell me also that he would need to follow up with me on the cost for a single-family home because obviously that's significantly more square footage than a condo or an apartment for a rental inspection. So I will need to report back to the village board on that particular item. So that was the preliminary information that was provided. I think the other question is to check with Attorney Mars and Molina with regard to at what point is the board comfortable with even partially subsidizing this program, recognizing that it may mitigate some other challenges because we're being proactive about our inspections? Because I know that there was concern about ensuring that the fees for inspections aren't too high or re-inspections for that matter.
So it sounds like to me, then, we really can't address what Ms. Miller was bringing up probably until our next meeting because we can't really talk about setting fees until we have those missing parts, those variables. Once we have the spreadsheet that Trustee Pollock has requested and we have some numbers from our consultants as to the cost of inspections for single-family, we can sort out the fee structure, you know, probably better at our next meeting. Mr. Pollock, did you have anything else other than that?
No, generally, that's good. I guess I just want to be sure that not only are direct costs in terms of paying the inspector, but also the softer costs because I'm sure that Manager Francis will spend some time on this, that every year, that the assistant village manager will spend some time, et cetera. And I want to make sure as best we can, we estimate those costs and add that into the fee structure.
Okay. Who's next? Who else has something to say? Ms. Evans? Please. Kristin?
Yes, I agree with Trustee Pollock that the fees we impose should be commensurate with the amount of work that it's going to take. Am I reading this right? We will be doing... I guess we'll be reviewing, inspecting one area per year, sort of in a cyclic manner, but also every time someone, a tenant, leaves their apartment, that unit has to be re-inspected?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. But seems... Is that... Are you comfortable that that's sustainable?
Are you asking that?
It just seems like... I'm asking that of Jessica, yeah, Manager Francis. Because I don't know how much turnover there is, but I would think that there would be a lot to do during the year then in between the area inspections.
So we would work with our contractual, and if we are able to fill the position of the building inspector, then we would work that into their responsibilities as well. If not, our contractual inspector has said, yes, whatever our needs are related to these rentals, and they do do it in other communities, these types of inspections that they would be able to assist and facilitate with the village. And it would be more of a scheduling mechanism of how many to schedule in a given week in addition to the regularly scheduled inspections.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Hannah?
Yeah, I've got several questions, but very pleased that this covers rental houses as well. And when I read the draft ordinance, the first thing that came to my mind was, you know, we have a lot of houses that are going on the rental market, and, you know, there's really no mechanism to determine if they have proper fire and safety. Do they have, you know, the escape routes that are needed for a rental unit? And so I think this is very helpful, again, going towards protecting, you know, the village, protecting the people who rent in this village, especially in homes, because I think that's where, you know, there's not a lot of thought as to compliance with code when you're simply, you know, can't sell your house and decide to rent it. So I applaud the attorneys and staff for getting out ahead of that. My question is, a couple of questions. The first question is, you know, I didn't see anything in here. Number one, you know, what happens if people simply don't provide information or updates? And number two, what happens if they provide inaccurate information? Do we, you know, rather that upon a tenant turnover, you know, do we simply make this an annual form that they fill out and provide? Number one. Number two, do we want somebody signing this under penalties of perjury? That somebody has to stand behind this information and say that this is truthful and accurate?
Mr. Molina?
So the issue about the update is something that President Sells raised with me earlier, and there are a couple of ways to address it. We could add language that makes... So right now, the change in tenancy is defined in the ordinance as a termination of the certificate, meaning if you don't have it anymore for that unit, if the tenant is changed. So we could add language that makes it an affirmative duty to provide any change in tenancy. There are a couple of ways to do that. The one is to add that language kind of at that point in the ordinance. Another thing that I thought of, and we had some discussions, we being Manager Francis and President Sells and I, as we got this ready for presentation to the board, we kicked around the idea of requiring as part of the registration application for the owners to give emergency contact information, basically identifying information as to the tenants that they have in each of the units, which would be the people on the lease, and an emergency contact in case there was an emergency because we might not have that. There was a concern about requiring that information regarding tenants maybe being too much of an imposition on the privacy of the tenants. But another option would be if that was included in the registration information in that section that where you have to apply for the certificate, there's a section there that says that any change in that information must be reported to the village within 30 days. So those are a couple of different ways to approach it, either in a very limited way, head-on adding language, or requiring tenant information. We could keep it minimal, but that way it would already be required in the way the registration application is defined. Regarding the duty to provide accurate information, there is a general duty in the code that's a code violation, and I'll have to find it, but it basically anybody... It's not under penalty of perjury, but it is a code violation to give inaccurate information to the village for any kind of application. So I'll make sure that it would cover this, but we rely on the information we're given as a village all across the board, whether it's regarding information for car vehicle stickers or whether it's zoning applications. All those things have critical information, and there is a requirement that any information given to the village to acquire something that the village issues has to be truthful, and it's a violation of the code not to. But I'll make sure that would cover this situation.
Mr. Hannah, can you just one second? Because I just saw something here that I think addresses what you asked. If you look on page 129 of the agenda packet.
Yep.
Under Provision 3 on regard... Now, this only pertains to the registration component. It doesn't pertain to the residential certificate, but it does say there that the application for registration will be filled out in its entirety truthfully and accurately. Now, what I think still remains, and I don't know if we can even do this, and I don't know how difficult it would be to enforce it, is, you know, do we want to have some kind of penalty involved in case there's inaccurate information provided?
Well, so I can address that. Right now, in the code, and again, in your code, I just know all codes have them, there is a general penalty provision that basically states that any violation of a requirement of the code shall constitute an offense, basically. And it is punishable by fine, and it's usually got the basic, you know, up to the maximum per day. So my belief, and again, I can confirm this with appropriate citations, is that any violation of the code, even when there's no specific penalty, would fall under the catch-all, and that would include providing inaccurate information. Now, you know, as you talked about President Sells, the issue of how enforceable it is, you know, the inaccurate information was a... You know, there probably is at least some kind of mens rea component if there was something was inadvertent. But, you know, in an appropriate case, I believe that the potential penalty is there.
Mr. Hannah?
That addressed my concerns. Again, I think this is a very good step towards, you know, making sure that our rental units, you know, especially the homes, are safe.
Ms. Collins?
What... When we're talking about with the change in tenancy, re-inspecting, what is the purpose of that? What do we think will have changed that that would trigger a new inspection? I'm just trying to balance the burden on the landlord with the purpose of this, which is for public safety.
So the thought, I think, was to make the inspections regular but realizing they would be a burden on staff, which is why the three-year cycle came in. And then the thought was that there may be an extended period where no inspection is done. I think one thing that could be done to address that problem, let's say a tenant only stayed for... Was going month to month and only stayed three or four months and then moved out. Would you need to do another inspection? We could add a caveat that the change in tenancy would trigger an inspection if one hadn't been done within the previous whatever period, you know, a year, two, three?
Well, we're talking about a three-year cycle. They would be inspected every three years.
That's true.
So is there a purpose of inspecting it every year? I mean, there are some units, I'm sure, that turn over every year. So what do we think? You know, I'm just looking for what is the intention there?
I'm not sure exactly how we got to that, if either President Sells or Manager Francis recall, but I remember we had... We went back and forth about how often to inspect and what would trigger an inspection, and this one, I'm not recalling the backstory to it.
Well, and my... Because my thought was, Jessica, when you're talking about setting up zones to be inspected, would the zones be geographic? Because, I mean, I would prefer that the zone, say, there's a given building that that building is not inspected every three years. Some units in that are year one, some are year two, some are year three, and then we have the opportunity to inspect that building basically every year because some units are within each of the zones. And then you wouldn't have a three-year And then you wouldn't have a three-year period of time that goes by that that building hasn't been locked out.
So on an annual basis, there are fire inspections that are done within common areas. So that's one piece of it. We can break it up. My concern with that is, and it's not, I think, sometimes it's easier to do one building, complete building at a time. Because I'm just fearful that, you know, numbers get transposed or whatever, and we believe that we've inspected. But if we know, okay, building A is all in year one, and this one's in two. And how I would break it up would be basically, what's the workload? How many different units are we looking at? And that's, I think, the intention of saying when there's turnover of those units is really to ensure that the tenant that was leaving didn't do things within the property that could potentially impact safety and health. Not to say that that happens, but it sometimes does, and so that's the reality of it. There are some villages that do these types of inspections, and they do it annually. So we were trying to balance when we were creating this of balancing the workload burden while also saying, if there is turnover, that's a great opportunity when that unit is completely vacant to go in, have our inspector go in, and make sure that there's no public health, public safety, life safety issues within the unit. I do like the idea that if, you know, if we are going in and inspecting a unit and they're due for another inspection the following year or within six to 12 months, that perhaps then they wouldn't be required for that. So I think I'm open to any of those different scenarios. But that was essentially the thought process of making sure that we inspected it when it was vacant. Because there was some discussion about just inspecting them when they turn over. But some residents stay in their units for a really long time. And so it could be 10 years that pass where we wouldn't be able to gain access to it.
Right, that's what I was just thinking when you were talking about that. But back to the zone thing, if, and I understand that would be easier to do a building. But if we could break it up by zones within a building, it does, you know, the problems that are in one unit are often in another. So, you know, whether it's leakage or rodents or whatever the issue is, you're going to see crossover many times into other units. So if we could just get into the building on a yearly basis, I think that would be helpful. But definitely, there's the economy of scale with doing the entire building, without a doubt.
Well, our inspector won't be charging us less. So we'll just have to come up with a methodology where we're splitting things up, and we'll come up with a system to track it to minimize any potential for human error overlooking a unit. But I think with our new software, we can be pretty efficient with that.
Is this typical, is this type of thing typical in towns? Yes.
Yes, it is, very.
So if I can just tack on to what Manager Francis just said. You know, Trustee Collins, we talked exactly about what you just suggested about whether we should try to, you know, take a given building and just divide the units up. It wouldn't be that onerous a thing on small buildings. But the concern was really, and this goes back to what Trustee Pollak was talking about, or kind of the soft cost in terms of, you know, the burden on staff of trying to keep track. Okay, well, you know, we did units one, you know, one through 10 this year. Next year, we do, you know, 11 through 20 or whatever. So that's one part of it in terms of just the logistics. But what we're, but in terms of the kind of the philosophy behind it, as to what is the reason for wanting to go in at the turnover of tenants? You know, one reason is what Manager Francis referred to. I mean, maybe the smoke detector was there and working before, now it isn't. So the real, really the goal, at least the goal of my mind through all of this, was to make sure that we provide, you know, protection for new residents, new tenants who are coming in, so that they, that we can assure them that they are moving into an apartment or, you know, that has met all of the relevant public safety requirements.
Would it be possible to have, depending on how often the unit has been inspected, a self-audit, and we come up with a checklist of what needs to be verified by the landlord? It's kind of, and it wouldn't always be that case. But, you know, just like if it's already been inspected six months ago, 12 months ago, whatever, they just need to do this checklist. They need to make sure there's a working smoke alarm. There's, you know, whatever the issues are that you're looking for. And then that would prevent us from having to go out and inspect the thing every time that the tenant turns over.
I guess. Yeah, I mean, I guess my response to that is, if we're going to allow self-inspections, there's no reason to do this at all.
No, but I'm just saying it would only be if it's frequent, if there's a frequent turnover. If it's already been inspected within the last six months or 12 months, then, you know.
I mean, I like that, yeah, I like that, or when you said that, that made a lot of sense to me. And maybe we can try to figure out a way to do that. And I think Manager Francis was relating to that. So let's take an example where, you know, on the cyclical inspection, a building is up for inspection on such and such a date. Well, because of the turnover in an apartment, it was done two months ago.
Right.
Particular apartment. It doesn't make any sense to go back into that apartment again two months later. So maybe we can find some kind of, like, for lack of a better word, a grandfathering kind of mechanism where, you know, if an apartment has been prior, there's been a prior inspection within X months or something like that, that no additional inspection would be needed. Have you ever seen anything like that, Mr. Malina?
Yes, and given a three-year inspection cycle, I think 12 months is a nice number. So that regardless of the trigger, whether it's because the apartment is coming up on the cycle or because there's been a change in tenancy, we can add language that there, that an inspection is not necessary if for other reasons, the apartment has been inspected and been certified within the previous 12 months. But we could pick any time, you know, two years seems a little much, given the concerns about the changeover. But 12 months seems pretty reasonable and seems to fit nicely within the three-year cycle.
What does everybody think of that?
I like that quote.
Am I seeing shaking heads or?
Yes.
What do you think?
I would say six months, not 12 months.
Well, then we're defying the idea of frequency then.
I like 12.
Looks like there's a consensus around. Ms. Collins, what do you think?
I'm good with 12. I would like to see the landlord, though, sign off that they've looked at it. If it's within that, you know. So the thing was inspected six months ago. We're saying we're not going to go back, because we were just there six months ago. But the landlord needs to sign some type of a certification that they've looked to make sure that these elements are there. Just so that we have some type of eye on the issue.
Mr. Malina, what do you think of that?
That would be easy to do. And it makes sense. And I mean, there's been a little bit of that in various communities because of the COVID situation for certain kinds of inspections where staff was actually having, you know, the applicants send in videos of certain things or exposure of pipes and so forth. So there's, you know, and it seems to have worked pretty well. And because, again, there's the obligation to provide truthful information. It basically makes the landlord do a once-through. A good landlord would do that anyway. But you have a requirement that they certify that these minimal measures, which we're defining as essential to someone renting within the village, are there. And I've looked at them, and I certify that, you know, the smoke detectors work. There's a working carbon monoxide detector, whatever is the requirement, whatever additional things. You know, there are plates on all the electrical outlets, whatever the things that we think are critical, and those things are typically easy to spot. So definitely doable.
Other thoughts? Ms. Evans?
Yeah, I was just thinking that with the increase in inspections, it might lead to better tenant situations where they might stay longer, might decrease the amount of turnover in the long, in the longer run.
Mr. Pollak?
I just want to make sure I understand what we're talking about when we're talking about the relationship between the required every three-year inspection versus the inspections that are done when there's a change in tenancy. I'm not sure if I understand that completely. We're saying that if there's a change in tenancy, you, an inspection is required. I get that, that's great, that's absolutely essential, I think, to this. But if that change in tenancy inspection's done, we don't do another inspection for a minimum of 12 months. Is that what we're saying?
In part, yes. I think we're saying two things, Trustee Pollak, because it could work the other way around as well. So for example, if coincidentally, a given unit had its three-year cycle inspection, and then just as it happens, the tenant in that unit, which was occupied at the time, moved out six months later, we're saying, again, if we add the language that we've been discussing, that I'm envisioning that inspection, that cyclical inspection, or that tenant inspection wouldn't occur. But the other way around, if a tenant left and you did an inspection, and then their cyclical inspection was coming up six months later, you wouldn't do it either. But we would, if Trustee Collins' suggestion was put in, in those situations where recent inspection had already been done and a trigger was met, the landlord would have to certify that certain basic things were code compliant.
Within 12 months.
Well, that's the time period that's out there right now. But it would work both ways. So whatever trigger was the cause of the inspection, if coincidentally, there had been an inspection by a different trigger, or maybe there was a violation that was reported six months before, and it was inspected and resolved, if it was recent enough, I would, the language I'm thinking about would obviate the need to do an inspection.
So I appreciate the logic behind all that. And we don't want to over-inspect. I completely appreciate that. But on the other hand, for one, I think the unit's empty. Why not inspect it? It's $50, it's not a burden on the landlord, not much of a burden. That's one thing. Second, you could get a situation where you go three years, 11 months with no inspection on a unit. Correct?
Yes, I mean, if it were within the 12 months, if it were 11 months and 25 days, you, yeah.
You could go almost four years, a day short, in theory, of four years without an inspection. Is that okay with us?
I mean, that is certainly not the intent.
I know, exactly.
My understanding was that there was going to be a minimum inspection every three years. And I think that's what everybody had in mind. And I think the exception that we're dealing with is we don't want to, you know, be in a situation where we have an inspection, you know, every two months for some reason. There has to be some, you know, some leeway between the two. I like Trustee Collins' self-evaluation in those interim periods. But, you know, I think there's a fine line, and I think we just sort of defer to the attorneys. You know, they understand our concern and to think through, you know, a workable proposal to address the concerns that we voiced here.
So one of the things we could do, and maybe Manager Francis was going to get there too, but I think to address Trustee Pollak's hypothetical presumes that if an inspection isn't done, let's say a cyclical inspection is not done because 11 months earlier, a tenant change inspection was done, that that unit would then be, go back onto a three-year cycle automatically. So they wouldn't be up for three years from the date when you passed over the inspection. That doesn't have to be that way if the administration of it throws that unit in a different pot of inspections, so that it'd be up in two years. You know, we throw it in a different, a different sector, I guess, because of that. But I don't know how realistic that is. But the concern that Trustee Pollak had would only arise if you had, you know, there was this inspection that was done because of a tenant change. Then 11 months later, they're due for their cyclical, they're not inspected, and then they are now going to be re-inspected, because they're in that pot until three years after that, which would be almost four years.
As long as that tenant was the same, is that correct?
Sure, another change in tenant automatically, you know, it would be over 12 months later then, and you'd inspect. Right.
You know, I think what Mr. Hanna just said is well-taken. I mean, our intent is that no unit will go uninspected for more than once every three years. That is our, that is our basic minimum of inspections. And then the balancing that we're trying to do is to not have undue inspections in the event of turnover. So I would suggest that we let our attorneys just figure that language out and bring it back to us. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yeah, that's fine, and that's exactly what I was thinking. I think staff and the attorney understands the issue, and you've summed it up very well, President Sells. So I'm fine with that, to have them work that out and come back in the ordinance. There was another related or similar issue that, actually, in one of Trustee Hanna's early statements got me thinking, which I appreciate, is he brought up the idea of an annual license, or maybe not inspection, but an annual license. I don't know if he intended to describe it that way, but that got me thinking. We require an annual business license, correct? So if you think about it, a landlord is running a business. Why not make them get a license every year, just like we do for our businesses? Just to keep them in the loop, for the same reasons we require an annual business license, require an annual landlord license or rental license, and only do, I'm not saying inspect every year. I'm just saying, just keep the paperwork up to date and not let things slide as we do with a business, have a landlord, you know, an annual license in that regard. So I'd like to hear what other trustees think about that, or the attorney thinks about that.
Ms. Francis?
Thank you, President Sells. That is what we anticipated, is that it would be something that would be put into our business licensing module. I'll have to work with Director Johns to see if there's a way for us to also put an expiration date on the inspection. So in what the board was discussing about making sure that it's every three years, even if we kind of allow this self-audit questionnaire, if they've already received an inspection previously. And so utilizing, everyone, based on the ordinance as it's currently drafted, would have to re-register, that's not the inspection, but just re-register each year. So it's basically filling out that form. There's no fee associated with that, the fees associated with the inspection. So I think we've hit on both items, and I think we can accomplish even the items related to, even if certain zones then become staggered or are changed from their zone because of turnover in certain units. So I think we're able to achieve everything that the board is looking for through our financial software.
Actually, if I can just follow up on that, looking at the draft you have in front of you under registration on page 129, it already anticipates that the registration form will be renewed annually.
Reviewed.
Right, thank you. I didn't catch that in the draft. But do we charge businesses for a license every year?
Yes.
So why not charge landlords for running their residential business every year?
So we're, one of the things we're trying to do, Trustee Pollak, is stay as clear away from the home rule issue as possible. And the rental licensing, when you get into those programs, for a summary... for some re, for various reasons under the precedent that's out there, gets us in a place of unnecessary concern, I think, and risk. So that was why we didn't do it, to have it be registration, and to have the recoupment for actual, you know, actual inspections done, to me puts us in a better place that way, and for very little in return, except a few. You know, you couldn't charge much for that. It's because it really can't be a revenue raiser, so.
Understood, and that makes perfect sense. I expected that might be the answer. So when we calculate the soft costs that they get charged every three years, we should add 50 cents or whatever it is for our annual costs of administering the collection, the receipt of those, the annual licenses, if that's legal, if that's proper.
That could go back to that analysis that staff is going to do, and if it's small enough, it's really impossible to challenge anyway.
There are comments from the trustees on this item. Okay, I have a couple of things that I want to circle back around to. First is something very minor, and it's in the opening, the Declaration of Purpose, Mr. Malina. And it's just a scribe thing in the fourth line down, where it says facilitate the enforcement. I think it should say, "to facilitate the enforcement of minimum standards for maintenance of rental properties to be free from substandard unsafe and/or non-code compliant conditions."
Whereas clause, are we on, President?
4119A, the Declaration of Purpose, fourth line, where it starts toward the end of the line.
Oh, okay, I was looking at the whereas clauses. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, "to facilitate the enforcement," and then "to be" in front of "free from substandard." And then on page 130, this is what I'm really interested in talking more about. So right now, the way this is set up is the inspections will be done, you know, either on a cyclical basis, or it'll be done at the turn of when a tenant vacates a dwelling unit. I think the clearest and fairest way to the building owners would be to say that they have an affirmative duty to notify us when there is a turnover in the tenant. We're not asking for tenant information. We don't want names and contacts and all that. But we put a duty on the owner to tell us that a unit has been vacated. But if we're going to put that requirement, we have to have some kind of violation tied to it. So we need something in the violations section and the penalty section that would actually have some kind of monetary consequence in the event that we're not told. I'm envisioning a situation where there's a turnover in a unit, the landlord or owner doesn't let us know, we discover it six months later, and the owner says, "Oh, okay, fine, come in and inspect." Well, for one thing, now we're inspecting while the tenant's there, instead of when the unit is empty, as Mr. Pollock was referencing, so it's in a position on the tenant, and there's been no consequence to the owner or the landlord whatsoever. So it seems to me that we should put that affirmative duty on them to notify us, and then have a specific penalty tied with it, a per-day penalty tied with it in the event they do not. Is that something that passes muster with you, Mr. Malina? He's either thinking, or he's muted.
I think he does not realize he's muted.
Mr. Malina, you?
So I was actually both. I wasn't talking, but I was muted, and that's because I was thinking. And I was thinking, is the best place to put it, as I told you, if we're just going to add that affirmative obligation, I am thinking that we would include it in the yearly certification area, where we would say that part of what they're certifying is that there, you know, that all the information is still current, and that there has been no change in tenancy. So they'd be doing that every, well, I'll put it in a couple places. I'll make them certify that the tenancy hasn't changed as part of the registration, because I think that's good to put in there. And then we'll add an affirmative duty on the part of the ownership to notify the landlord if there's been a change in tenancy. And I think we need to define a change in tenancy for the reasons that President Sells and I were talking about, too, at least in at least in a kind of a basic way, because a change in tenancy legally could be any change in tenancy. So if two people are on the lease, and one moves out, you could say, well, there's been a change in tenancy. So we would say that where there's a change, where none of the tenants, the current tenants are in the unit anymore, but I think we should spell that out.
That's why you get paid to figure out how to say that.
That's kind of what everyone, is everyone thinking along those same lines, because I think it's kind of common. You have, you know, two people, or maybe three people, are sharing a lease, and one of them moves on, but that's probably not enough of a change to trigger this requirement, and the apartment's not vacant, which is one of the things we're saying.
And see, and everybody else chime in here, my sense is that it's the vacation of the unit that is triggering. You know, if you've got three people on a lease, and a person drops off, or somebody else adds on, that, to me, technically, you know, it's
Well, okay, so here, I just answered my own question, I guess, about how to do this. So I think what we do is we tie it to when any change in tenancy creates a vacating of the unit.
Perfect.
And we're done.
Perfect. Mr. Gallegos?
Yeah, I have a question. So we want to go in there and inspect when it's empty. But what happens if the landlord has a tenant moving out on the 31st? And on the first, it's already rented. I mean, he could have someone that's lined up the very next day. Are we going to have time enough for that window to go in there and inspect while it's empty?
I mean, that's more of a scheduling thing, I think, with the landlord. I mean, you know, we can make it clear then that we prefer to go in when it's vacant, just for the convenience of both the owner and the potential resident.
So how much time in advance do we want, knowing that that opportunity will present itself?
Say that again.
So let's say the landlord knows, hey, listen, it's going to be empty on the 31st, but only for like two hours or so before the next tenant moves in. How much in advance time do we need for that landlord to notify us, the village?
I don't know the answer to that. Manager Francis, how much lead time do we need on an inspection?
It is in here, the requirement for them providing us. Hold on. Trying to find. I mean, for us, in, for most cases, our inspector that would be able to handle this would be in town Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, would be able to fit it into his schedule, so it's really a timing. If we get the call Friday at 4 o'clock, that the tenant's moving out on Saturday, obviously, we're not going to have the capacity or ability to do the inspection on a Saturday, because it would be during regular business hours.
To me...
This is, if I may interrupt just a second, this is addressed on page 131, section G2A. They can see every rental dwelling unit, the village must be given at least two weeks' advance notice.
Okay, all right, okay.
And really, it's kind of a practical thing, too. It's in everybody's interest to do it when it's vacant. They're creating, you know, kind of an inconvenience for a tenant if it doesn't happen, and, you know, it's either forgotten, or there's too tight a window. But I think in reality, most apartments are going to be vacant for, you know, some period of time, not just a couple hours.
Okay, so I think we've accomplished what we need to here. We're going to get the financial analysis that Mr. Pollock asked for, and that'll help us address Ms. Miller's concern and our concern about the appropriateness of the fees. And then Mr. Malina will bring us back the draft language that we've talked about in terms of duplication of inspections and the notification and penalties involved therewith.
Correct.
Else? Okay. Let's move on then to our next agenda item. Which is an ordinance amending the Village of Riverside Village Code relative to parkway, parking, and driveways. Manager Francis, are you going to take this one?
Yes, I am. Thank you, President Sells. Currently, the village code contains language that makes it unlawful for residents with front-loaded garages to park on their driveways. The village code restricts parking to the side yard or rear yard, and certain homes within the village do not have side or rear yards sufficient to allow parking of a vehicle. It was noted previously that the police department cannot issue citations to those parking in front of their front-loaded garages. The ordinance will remove dated language from the village code that cannot be enforced. And this item is listed for board action this evening.
So we have in front of us an ordinance to amend the Village of Riverside Code relative to parking in driveways, so.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gallegos, second by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Evans. Is there any discussion? Ms. Collins?
So will we be enforcing the new ordinance? No parking on the apron?
Yes. That we can enforce, and that in the past we were able to enforce. It was really more of a matter of those parking in their front of their front-loaded garages, in which we would receive complaints that we couldn't enforce that portion of the village code.
Okay, I'm good.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Trustee Hannan?
Aye.
Trustee Pollock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is a general discussion regarding the Groveland flood wall design.
Thank you, President Sells. The village board last discussed the Groveland flood wall in December of 2020, or previously discussed at that time. The Army Corps of Engineers presented potential alignments and elevations of the wall. The board authorized moving forward with the design phase, and also tasked the village engineer to work with Doug Gotham, landscape architect with Burke Engineering, to create renderings of a flood wall, taking into account the village's historic nature. Burke Engineering has completed the renderings, and these options are attached. On March 18th, 2021, President Sells provided the village board and residents an update on the flood wall project, including the renderings of the design options of the flood wall in the letters from the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency of October 6, 2015, and November 3, 2015, addressed to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding the Section 106 review. President Sells noted during his predecessor's report that the flood wall design would be placed on the board agendas for the month of April, in addition to the agendas for the Landscape Advisory Commission and the Preservation Commission. This item this evening is for discussion and feedback only, and it will be on Preservation's Commission's meeting, which is next Thursday at 7:00, and also on the Landscape Advisory Commission meeting agenda, which is April 13th at 7:00. Both of them will be via Zoom.
And I can just add to that, if you go to our website, the village's website, I believe it's under Trending, correct me if I'm wrong, Clerk Kaylee, all of the various Zoom links for the preservation meeting on the 8th, LAC meeting on the 13th, and of course, our meetings are also in there, too. So any residents who wish to join those public discussions about the flood wall design, I encourage you to do so. I believe we do have some public comment on this one. Clerk Kaylee, is that correct?
We do. And I just want to mention also that the information about those meeting dates is also on the Groveland Birm page of the website as well, in addition to the Trending topic. So the first email that we received is from Mary Erin J. of West Avenue. And her message is, "My husband and I are unable to attend the Zoom village board meeting, so I'm submitting a couple of questions in advance." The question one, or statement one, "The design renderings show the flood wall setback from the river bank, a distance that appears to be about 7 to 10 feet. Recognizing that visible riverbank and land space fluctuates with the rise and fall of the river, how will the Army Corps determine the flood wall location relative to the river and the correlating location of the wall in our yard? My understanding is that there needs to be an easement of at least 15 to 20 feet between the wall and our property. I am concerned about the exact wall location in our yard and how much of our home property we will lose. When will the property owners who are directly affected by the wall get those details?" Item two is, "The design renderings show no river access points for property owners on the river. What are the intentions for addressing river access, as has been discussed in previous meetings?" Item three is, "What is the timeline for direct discussion with us regarding property acquisition? One of the previously shared project timelines had construction beginning in the fall or winter of 2019, with completion in spring or summer of 2020. What is the new construction timeline?" And her final question is, "The rockery-style wall shows rocks piled on the riverside. Will there also be rocks piled on the property owner's side?" That is the first email. The second message that we received is from resident Michelle Patterson, also of West Avenue. And she says that, "My primary opinion is that the people who will have the flood wall in their yards should determine what design they like best. If the project moves forward, then I think their preferences should be the first consideration. If the affected residents do not want to contribute an opinion, then my first preference is the Franklin Park rockery combination style, followed by the Franklin Park style. I don't really like the Prospect Park style." And the final email that we received on this topic is from resident Donald Spatney of Woodside Road. And he says, "Only two things will stop the flooding, diversion or retention. Neither is possible here. Why the village would choose to work with Mr. Zercher and the Army Corps, again, is beyond me. They ruined the Swan Pond and didn't do many of the things they promised. The retention curtain they left behind is one of the main causes of the deterioration of the path. They cut down beautiful trees and did not replant. If President Sells compared what they said they would do to the deal they signed with the village and never did, or if he remembered that the general had to come to a meeting at PJ Clem's and admitted that they lied, he does not want us to trust the Army Corps. They claim that they will do everything, spend millions, and then they do not. If they build what they propose, it will only cause the water to flow onto Maplewood, just as the pipe they put into the Swan Pond lets water into the park when the river rises." He says, "Does anyone remember the beautiful, healthy American Elms that they cut down just because of the grading plan they did not want to change? Does anyone remember when you could walk from the library hill down the bridge onto a nice lawn that kids even played soccer on? Why would anyone trust them again? The lure of something for nothing is irresistible, it seems. It is a bad idea for a foolish project and ugly to boot. I suggest the board members get out the Hoffman Dam project stuff the village signed and see how they did not perform, and in fact, ruined one of the nicest places in the village." Donald Spatney.
So before I say it, Ms. Sally?
I was just going to say, we did also receive an email from Mr. Dale Yates, which I believe he sent directly to all of you. I just want to confirm that you've seen that.
Yes, we have.
Thank you.
So let me address some of the questions and public comment before I turn it over to the trustees. I thought, and I hope I'm saying Mary's last name right, Arangie. I thought her questions were really well taken, and I think I can address them. With regard about the location of the flood wall, that is due to be done in May. Mr. Zucker has been reminded that the Army Corps has Mr. Zucker has been reminded that the Army Corps has promised that they're going to either do some kind of mock-up, or at the very least, run some kind of like a line or something that will show exactly where the flood wall will be located and how high it will be relative to the homes on West. And just as an aside, all of the folks on West were notified by hand-delivered mail about this discussion this evening, because to take what Ms. Patterson said, it's hard. We're very, very, very aware of the impact this is going to have on them, and we want to make sure that they are an integral part of this discussion as it goes along. So yes, the residents absolutely have a right to know exactly where the swall is going to be and how high it's going to be, and that will be accomplished either in May or early June, according to Mr. Zucker. With regard to the river access, that kind of ties into what I just said. Once we have had a line drawn that shows how high the wall is going to be through the length of West, that will give us some idea about exactly what kind of access points might be, might or might not be possible. Now, with regard to the construction and property acquisition, we're kind of dependent upon the State Historic Preservation Office with regard to that, which is why we are having this discussion tonight and why we're having it at Preservation LAC and again, at our next meeting in April. We need to have some kind of general design for the wall that we can send to the Historic Preservation Office so that they can renew our Section 106 approval that we got back in 2016, I think it was. But we want to make sure that we get the input of our Preservation LAC commissions and that we have something specific that we can show to the State Historic Preservation Office. Once, because we promised that we were going to do that and have that in hand before we move forward with either property acquisition or any kind of discussion of construction. So as soon as we have that, we'll be able to give a firm timeline about what's to come. And lastly, with regard to the rockery style wall, as it is, as the rendering currently presents, the rockery would only be on the riverside of the wall. It would not be on the land side facing the homes. So that's with regard to that. I agree with Ms. Patterson that we need to take into account heavily what the folks on West feel about this, about this design. And then with regard to the kind of general criticism of the Army Corps, I would just like to point out that there's been considerable misinformation about what happened in Swan Pond, probably for going on a decade now. The fact of the matter is, is that the grade plan that the Army Corps originally presented was, they were not allowed to build it. There were modifications made to that grading plan by the majority of the then-board that changed the nature of the grading and drainage in Swan Pond. So it isn't fair to put the changes in grading and water flow in Swan Pond at the feet of the Army Corps. And I also would point out that there were a lot of people back during that Huffman Dam consideration that had all kind of kind of doomsday scenarios about how there were going to be dry swatches, and we were going to have mosquito infestation, and it never was going to work, et cetera, et cetera. And we've seen what actually happened. And lastly, I would point out that every aspect of this plan has been reviewed and vetted by our village engineer. So contrary to some claims that we're only relying on the Army Corps, that simply, flatly is not the case. We are vetting this at every step through Burke Engineering, which is one of the leading water engineering firms in the country, if not the world. So, but having said that, I will now turn the general discussion over. Our real concern tonight is really aesthetics. I'm interested in allowing an opportunity for either the trustees or anyone else who might be here with us to talk about the designs and give us your reaction and thoughts. So be quiet, turn it over. Comments? Yes, ma'am. All I see is Susan. I don't know what else to call you.
Yeah, that's me. I live on 50 West, the condo building near the bridge. So, I mean, as far as which one I would like, I like the rockery one the best. Or the one, the same one, the first one without the stones. I do not like the second one. So just to let you know. I guess we can't really have a say of like where it's going to be. I don't want it like too far up on our property. I suppose there's no way they could do it so that we could still see over the wall, like if we're in the backyard or something. I don't know.
Hopefully, Susan, hopefully that will be answered when they go out there and run this line or put up the, you know, some kind of demonstration wall so that we'll be able to see. I mean, there are different options as to where it can go. There's not a huge variation about how far east or west it can go because of the required 15-foot easement that we need. But, you know, what they're going to do is go out and put up kind of their best recommendation. And then, and then at that point, once, you know, you and the other residents over there have a chance to look at it, then we can certainly revisit that and fine-tune it. Because, I mean, our desire, of course, is to have it at a location that impacts all of you the least possible.
15-foot easement, does that mean you can't go back from the river more than 15 feet?
It means that on either side of the wall, you can't have any like trees or anything like that planted that might somehow impact the integrity of the construction of the wall.
Oh. Okay.
So you could have, so let's say, for example, if you had the wall, you could certainly have like native grasses, you know, ornamental plants, things like that, but you wouldn't be able to, you know, plant a tree, you know, within 15 feet of the wall.
Wait, now, if you, if we have a tree already, would it be cut down?
I'm sorry?
If we have a tree already, would it be cut down?
If, Mr. Tab, and correct me again if I'm wrong, if, if, once the location of the wall is established, if there was vegetation within 15 feet of the wall, yes, it would be removed.
That's been my understanding of this throughout.
Yeah.
All right.
Other comments? Mr. Rankin? Hello?
Yes, thank you, President and trustees. Before I even say anything, I just want to thank you all for your dedication and contributions. We really appreciate it as a village. It's just an aesthetic comment. I much prefer the Franklin Park style with the rockery also. My question, though, would be, would that style be continued on down the Groveland berm existing? I'm assuming they would carry that concept aesthetically, because it does have to go up two or three feet, I believe. So, thank you.
And again, Mr. Tab, jump in here. My understanding is, to the degree possible, the capping look would remain, and it would have the same appearance also over on Park Place. So we would, we would keep the same aesthetic. I mean, obviously, the Groveland aspect is already there, but to the degree possible, we would maintain that aesthetic.
Think the appearance will try to be mimicked throughout the project, the length of the project.
Right. I made that assumption, but I just wanted to make sure we didn't just have a concrete park here or something.
Other comments? Ms. Evans?
Yes. I also like Franklin Park with the rockery style. I am looking forward to hearing from the Landscaping Advisory Commission and Preservation. But just from a personal standpoint, I just was wondering if there's any way to cap the tops of the building or soften the tops of the building in another way versus these like sort of this rounded material that sort of like just stuck on top of it. I'd be interested in seeing some other strategies for capping the top of the wall.
So if, that's certainly possible. Where that came from, and it's actually curious, I was watching a detective show the other night in England, and that rounded cap apparently is pretty ubiquitous. And if you look at the Franklin Park, the actual Franklin Park walls that Mr. Gotham provided us, that's where he picked that detail up, was the rounded capstones. But, yeah. I mean, everything here can be varied, you know, even like the, even the, because this is done with form liners. So, you know, once we get a general design in place, this can certainly be fine-tuned. And if there are other options that soften the top or make it look more natural, that can be done. Ms. Collins?
This, the rockery, is that? Is that riprap? Or what is, what is maintaining that? Is there, are there maintenance costs involved with that?
Mr. Tab, you want to take that one?
Yeah, the stones at the bottom, that's definitely riprap. As far as a maintenance perspective, I don't really foresee a whole lot. You definitely will get some, probably some vegetation trying to sprout within those rocks that'll have to be removed just because we, you know. Like President Sells mentioned, we don't want vegetation, trees, bushes, so forth, taking hold within the 15-foot easement. So if something tries to sprout, we'll probably end up removing it from the riverbank there just to, you know, keep the structure integrity.
But riprap does have some maintenance costs, just as far as maintaining that?
No, it's just a bunch of rocks piled on top of each other. If there's, for some reason, there were some ice floes that maybe would shift some of them.
Right.
But I would foresee them using an adequate size where that's not an issue.
So they're just loose rocks that are piled? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the face of the wall stamped, and then the rocks in front of it at the base are just a pile of large diameter boulders.
We have, I have riprap at one of our cabin, and the ice can affect it. So that's my concern. I like the look of it, but my concern with that is that there may be maintenance costs with this.
If I can just pass on something that Mr. Orion said to us, and, or Mr. Kaylee, I'm sorry. I mean, that's possible. I mean, especially if we have a serious flood event or if we were to have some kind of ice backups or something. But he said that the riprap itself, even if you have to replace it, is not a high-dollar item. It's only if you were to get into like the really large, more ornamental stones that you would have an issue. But this irregular riprap like this, according to Mr. Galey, is pretty low maintenance and low cost. Ms. Francis?
You have a resident that wants to make a public comment. Their name is iPad 2.
Let's let the trustees finish up their conversation first. And with all due respect to iPad 2, I would like a name, please, a real name. So if you can get that while the trustees are talking. Further comments from the trustees?
I have another question.
Please.
So, so we have, we do, we have these three basic ideas for the wall. Are they all stamped? Or is just like actual rocks that are like stacked rocks? Is that a possibility? Are we only looking at stamped?
Well, the actual, the vertical wall itself is, it will be done with form liners. And then, you know, of course, the irregular rock that you're seeing in the rockery style is actual rock. So that will be. There was an earlier design that was floated that was called the rockery that had actual boulders that were ornamentally piled up to create a wall. And that was in the seven-figure-plus range. So according to Mr. Galey, it was a very, very expensive, you know, way of trying to do it. So this, you know, the Franklin Park or the Prospect Park with rockery is kind of a compromise between those two. But I did, I hope you got it. I sent out, Mr. Galey also sent us out something that, from the company that they work with that does a lot of these form liners and the staining. So the, you know, the face of the wall really can look however you want it to look. I mean, if you want it to look more like limestone, you can do that. If you want it to look more like boulders, you can do that. I think what Mr. Gotham was trying to do here was, was kind of try to match the aesthetic that we already have going on, for example, in our business district and in our planters and those kinds of things. So, but yeah, there's certainly a vast array of different form liners that can be used. I thought, Susan, did you have another comment? I thought I saw you raise your hand.
Oh, I was just going to say that I kind of like the curved top, but that's just me. Trustee Evans? I'm just saying, I kind of like it, but.
Okay.
Anyway. Do you live close? Do you live on the river too?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Pollak?
Just a point of clarification, are we in public comment or are we in trustee discussion?
It looks kind of like we're in a little bit of both. Did you have something that you wanted to say?
I wanted to hear from all the residents before we discuss it any further.
Okay, well, in that.
As would I.
Okay, let's see, is the gentleman otherwise known as iPad 2, is he still here? I saw him for a moment, then he seems to be gone.
He has left the meeting.
Okay, iPad 2 is gone. Other resident comment? Anybody in the waiting room that we know of? Going once? We'll see if iPad 2, maybe he had a connection problem. If he comes back, we'll bring him into the conversation. Okay, so trustees?
I have another question.
Please.
So the little, the sort of like dividers that you can see on all the walls. What are the, is there a purpose for those? Or is that cosmetic?
You mean the little, like the little tower kind of thing? Those are just aesthetic. That, that addressed the subject, because when we first, that really first, the first drawing we got from the Army Corps that just looked like one long white wall, uniform wall. I think this, you know, Mr. Gotham was trying to find some way to break it up and make it more architectural and design and aesthetic. And let's see here. And if you look at, if you look at the Prospect Park, the, those designs, the actual Prospect Park, you can see the same kind of, where they stand out from the. So, he's just, he's trying to, he's trying to pick up as many of those Homestead and Vox design elements as he can. Mr. Gallagos, can I see a hand?
Yeah, I was going to say, I was in favor of option number three as well with the big rocks. Saying it does look very similar to what we have is the entranceway on the Hoffman Bridge area. So I like to have that continuity from an aesthetic standpoint. So I'd be favor of option number three as well.
Mr. Hannan?
Yeah, I just, again, want to reiterate where we're at in the process, just so, you know, everybody from the public that's kind enough to join the Zoom meeting and watching on TV. You know, the point of this, as President Sells says, is to pick a path so we have something to present to the, you know, State Historic Preservation Office. So we're giving them something concrete. So, you know, again, what, you know, our landmark status, we want that to be as crystal clear as possible. You know, one of the email comments was, you know, we want our voices heard. Again, President Sells gave many, many opportunities. Come to these meetings, come to these commissions, send emails to the trustees. You know, your voices need to be heard and input. Susan, I appreciate you joining on and let us know which design you liked. I'd love to hear more of that, because this is a wall that is, you know, affects people driving in, people driving by, people who live on Groveland and West. You know, this is a very big decision, and the more voices that the board hears, the better decision this is going to be.
Thank you, trustee. I really appreciate you saying that. Thank you, trustee. I, I really appreciate you saying that. Is that all we have for this, this evening? Mr. Pollak?
Thank you. I just wanted to make some summary comment. As far as the appearance, um, as the, the design, I, I, I want to withhold, uh, keep an open mind until we hear from the landscape advisory commission, the preservation commission. I think we have some very good options, um, in terms of materials and design. Um, I, I have my, I know what I prefer at this point, but I want to hear from them first. Um, because they're smarter than me when it comes to design and landscape. Um, but I do want to acknowledge, uh, Christopher Burke Engineering. Uh, you know, are, uh, they researched Frederick Law Olmstead. They, they researched, I mean, the parks you see referenced here, here are Frederick Law Olmstead parks. They went back and they looked at what Olmstead did and brought that to Riverside. And I think we need to keep that front of mind when we're looking at these options because, um, that's how you do planning and that's how you do good engineering. Uh, and I appreciate that very much, the research they did and to bring us these, these options. Um, two issues that came up in, in some of the resident comments that I, I want to learn more about as we proceed in this. One is, um, are there rocks on the property owner's side? What, what do we do on the property owner's side? How does that? You know, we need to look at that as well. Um, you know, what happens on that side of the wall? Um, and, and someone mentioned river access at one point. I don't know if there are any viable, uh, options for river access from the, uh, what would be the east side of the wall, but we need to, to continue to look at that. Um, and, and that may be beyond what we're doing right now, but at some point we need to look at that. Uh, finally, at the risk of, uh, over, or talking too much, you know, the issue of Swan Pond came up again. I've been on the board for a number of years and several times I've heard people, handful of people degrade Swan Pond the way it looks right now. I've lived in the village for 25 years and in my mind Swan Pond has never looked better. Um, I'd rather see wetlands and, and, and native natural space than soccer fields. Um, as much as I appreciate soccer fields, um, I think it looks beautiful. Is it perfect? I don't know. We could ask the engineers that if there's some improvements that need to be made and certainly with the, um, with the walkway we're doing and, and the other improvements, that may make it exactly what we want it to be. But I, I'm kind of tired of hearing about how terrible Swan Pond is, when in my mind, it is right now the most beautiful part of, of Riverside. And I apologize for that digression and going off topic, but I had to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pollak. And, and I don't think that is, uh, I don't think that is off topic. I mean, especially when those, when those, the native plantings are, are up and the, you know, and the field is full of, you know, bees and butterflies and dragonflies and, and the, you know, I, I mean, I, I walk on through there all the time. The other day there was a family of deer, you know, resting down there amongst the, amongst the native grasses. Uh, I mean, there's certainly a place for recreation, but Riverside, you know, the core idea of Riverside was always that, that beauty is a civic necessity. And Swan Pond to me is the jewel of our village. I agree with you. And, and I've heard from many, many other residents who agree with you that, that it is, has never looked better. So I appreciate you saying that. Are we finished with this one for this evening?
If I could just follow up on, um, what you said and, um, trustee Pollak. Um, people don't realize that the landscaping advisory commission and also Michael Collins and his team, um, do maintain the plantings and add every year to the native plantings in Swan Pond. It's a, it's an ongoing project, beautification project. Um, and so I also disagree that it looks terrible. I think it looks, it's looking really beautiful.
Thank you. I see a hand up, I think, from Patrick. Patrick, can you introduce yourself?
It's, uh, Patrick O'Loughlin. Hey, President Sells, uh, good to see you.
Nice to see you.
My concern is more about the financial impact that this wall will have on my family um, and our ability to sell our house. Um, that's a very real concern, uh, with where this wall is going to be and the, the height of the wall. My real concern is that I will not be able to sell my house and it will cause undue harm to us. This project has been going on and hanging over our heads for years now. And this is undue stress that continues. Every time there's a meeting, what's going to happen next? Oh, what kind of economic hit are we going to take from this wall? This is a very, very, uh, deep concern for us. And I, I'd appreciate if that was held up in the forefront of all of your minds as you're going through this process, because this really affects us in a very negative way. I appreciate the, uh, chance to talk with you and I hope that this resonates with all of you.
Thank you, you know, Patrick. I can, I can tell you, and I, I am, I feel quite, quite certain that I speak for everyone here. Um, it is certainly foremost in my mind. Um, which is one reason I would really like to get this, this wall design decision made. Because, um, we're, we're kind of, and you know, you are far more limbo than we are because it's your, it, you know, it's affecting your, your personal life in a way that it doesn't affect ours. But once we can get this, this information to SHPO, the state historic preservation office, and get that 106 done, and then we can get Army Corps out so they can show us exactly where that wall is going to be, then we have something solid that, that we can, that we can work off of. But I can tell you that, that all of us appreciate, well, to the degree we can appreciate it from afar, the impact and the stress that this, and the uncertainty that this is having on you and the other folks over there on West, or near our neighbors. And we want what's best for you. And, uh, we're going to do everything and within our power to make sure that that happens.
Thanks.
Other comments?
I have one more question.
Please.
Have we gotten, um, any indication for how long the project will last, when and if it gets started?
You know, I don't remember, Director Tab, do you recall once they break, break ground, how long this is going to take?
I understand, I understand it was going to be two years.
So will they work on the whole wall for two years at the same time or will they start in one place and work their way down?
That I'm unsure of. I don't know.
I believe they will be mobilizing and doing pieces of it. Um, I'm trying to pull up the current schedule, which I know is absolutely a, a moving target. Sorry, hold on just a moment. If you'll bear with me. The last schedule update, um, which was as of November of last year. Um, and obviously we're, we're not on target with schedule was finalizing the alignment. Um, and then doing final engineering and design, um, between. So finalizing the alignment was supposed to happen in spring of 2021. Um, I think we're still a couple of months behind on that with final engineering and design, uh, being completed by spring of 2022. And then looking at awarding a contract in summer of 2022 and construction beginning in the fall of 2022. With the construction ending in summer of 2024. So, um, it is my belief that that schedule needs to be adjusted by a few months. Um, and so once we have that updated schedule, we'll definitely post it, um, that's subject to Army Corps of Engineers.
Susan, did I see a hand? Please.
You did? Um, how, how long is this, uh, wall going to be? Like where to where? I'm just curious.
It goes from the Forest Avenue Bridge to the Trestle. I think, I want to say about 700.
You mean that, you mean, uh, for the, um, the train, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Was it seven, is it about 700 feet, Director Tab? 670, something like that?
I don't know the number off the top of my head. I can.
It's right at 700.
Hold it up through our GIS system here, uh, if you bear with me.
Yeah, it's about 700 feet and it's a, a fairly straight shot. You know, it's pretty straight right there.
Would they be like, have a bunch of, uh, construction equipment like in our yard all the time?
The, um, that, that has to be determined by the Army Corps and, and as this, uh, let's see this, I, I really appreciate, appreciate what, what Patrick just said. You know, because there, there is so much uncertainty right now for the folks, you know, all of you who live over there on, on West. And that's really why, at least as far as I'm concerned, that's why I'm trying to, to get this, this, at least this initial design decision made. So we can start getting some, some kind of, you know, certainty to, to what, you know, what we're going to do and when. So that the Army Corps can start and their communications with the folks that live over there, start telling you exactly, you know, where, you know, things would be staged, to how the construction equipment would impact you in your life. Because that's, uh, and, but we can't really do that until we know, you know, what, what wall we're going to use. We get the approval of the reapproval of the 106 from the state historic preservation office and then have the location determined once and for all. Once we get there, uh, and I will be out of office at that point. But once we get to that point, I would hope that, you know, that a, a construction decision could be made. And once the construction decision is made, then we really have something solid that we can work off of and communication with the residents over there as to, you know, what their option, options are in terms of, of what they want to do with regard to this project. Please, Susan, go ahead.
Yes, okay. Well, um, this kind of brings us off another beef I have. Um, we used to be able to park on West Avenue and now, and I realize you took the parking away because I guess there was, we're working on the sewers or whatever on Forest, but it's like, it, it seems to me if you're going to be having a bunch of, uh, people back there, that it would be kind of nice to be able to park on the street again. I don't understand why we can't do that if you could.
We can certainly look at that. We can look at, a look at that and, I mean, if your, if your parking is impacted by the construction of the wall, we of course will, will make accommodations for that.
I'm just saying, it sounds, seems like to me you could open it up anyway.
There's a lot of people in this town who would like to be able to park on the street.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it looks like we're done with this one. So, uh, again, just to remind everyone, preservation commission meeting is April 8th. Landscape advisory commission meeting is April 13th. The Zoom links will be available on the, those relative websites. It'll be under trending on the village website. And it's also on the Groveland page, uh, in our website. So I encourage, along with Mr. Hannan, please, what, what we need most right now is to hear from all of you. So please reach out to us and let us know your thoughts. Um, is there any new business this evening?
No, one question about that. Ben, when will we, when do we expect to discuss this again?
We will discuss it again on our, at our second meeting in April, on April 15.
All right. That's all.
And it's my hope, I mean, this is not firm. Uh, if, if we have sufficient, uh, feedback and input that, that all of the trustees are comfortable with making a, a design decision, it's my hope that we could make at least the design decision at that point. If it needs to take longer and, and all of you, you know, the trustees want more input, then of course we will do that. Okay. So we do have need for an executive session this evening to discuss pending probable or imminent. Thank you, Susan. Thanks for coming. Uh, or imminent litigation. So I'd ask for a second to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene, no final action will be taken.
Motion made.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hannan. Uh, Mr. Malina, did you want to close this out here with the COVID?
Yes. So, uh, for all, we need under, because this was a virtual meeting, it wasn't a completely open meeting. Each of the elected officials needs to confirm that they were able to participate fully and heard everything fully, uh, during the course of this meeting. So I'll go around to each of you and ask you, that's, those are the questions that you were able to understand everything and you were able to participate and heard everything. Uh, so we will go first to trustee Hannan.
I heard everything.
And you participated fully and understood, you're answering yes to all, right?
Yes to all.
Trustee Collins?
Yes to all.
Trustee Evans?
Yes to all.
Trustee Pollak?
Yes to all.
Trustee Galagos?
Yes to all.
And President Sells?
Yes to all.
So we are now free to move over to our closed session because that vote has already been taken. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Every, happy Easter to everyone. Uh, meeting is adjourned.